Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna unofficially start the meeting. Happy New Year. I hope everyone's had a great holiday/winter break. Before we officially start the meeting, I will need to administer the oath of office to our new board members and our re-elected board member, Michelle, Richard, and Laura, to do that process. I will call you up individually to the podium. I'll just go in alphabetical order. And I'll read you the oath, and then at the end you'll remark by saying "I do." And we'll move on. So first up, Michelle, do you want to join me at the podium? Raise your right hand. Michelle, do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as member of the Board of Education of Strongsville City School District, Cuyahoga County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office until your successor is elected and qualified. If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as member of the Board of Education of the Strongsville City School District, Cuyahoga County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified. If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Please raise your right hand. Laura, do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as member of the Board of Education of the Strongsville City School District, Cuyahoga County, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified. If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. And now, any board member can call the meeting to order.
Right now, we need to call to order. Can we do roll call? George?
George, before we do that, we would need to appoint the President pro temp.
Pro temp?
Yep.
George, we had on the order to do the roll call first.
No, I had...
So, we need to...
Number four.
I think we need to do the President pro temp so that he can then continue with the meeting.
I can do it.
So, Mr. Grozan? I'd like to make a motion to nominate you, Mr. Grozan, as President pro temp.
Okay. Thank you so much, sir.
Do you need a second? Second.
Any other nominations? Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Forgive me, I cut myself shaving out of my nose, so it's just the way it is what it is. So, our next step is roll call.
Mrs. Bissel?
Here.
Colonel Evans? Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mrs. Hausum?
Here.
For President.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We've done oath of office already. Now, we need to do the addendum. Duke Evans has resigned from the Board, so that is common knowledge. And the next part is the acceptance of a resignation of a member of Duke Evans. Can we have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Can you take a roll call?
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
And then, next, we need to go into the election and oath of office, school board president for a one-year term.
Mr. Grozan, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Richard Miko.
Sure.
I will second that.
Any other nominations? Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Miko, will you please join me at the podium? Congratulations. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as President of the Board, as President of the Strongsville Board of Education, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified. If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I just want to thank my fellow board members and the team for their confidence in me, and I look forward to a great year. At this point in time, we have an election and oath of office, Board of Education Vice President to one-year term. I would like to nominate Mrs. Laura Wolf-Hausum.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Grozan. Mr. Anagnostu, would you take the role?
Sure. Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as Vice President of the Strongsville Board of Education, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuous and said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified. If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.
Wow, my God.
And so, we congratulate Mrs. Wolf-Hausum, and we look forward to a great year. At this point in time, if there are any people who would like to recess, I know there's some young children who have homework. Now may or may not be appropriate. But thank you for, everyone, for your attendance. Next on our agenda is public comment. I have one slip from Mrs. Kelly Kosick and Mr. Matt Schoenhut. Would you please come to the podium, state your names? Oh, and a, and Mr. Carbone. So, welcome, and the floor is yours.
I'm Kelly Kosick for everybody at home. We just wanted to come and congratulate the newly-elected members, the re-elected member and the current member who is still sitting here, and let you know that we are really looking forward to working with you during your term on the school board, and hope that we can continue to have a great relationship. We also are really jealous of your signs, and we would like to have some signs like that, and I hear they're Maker Space, so let's make that happen. I'm gonna turn it over to the other guys.
Thank you, Kelly. And Matt Schoenhut, for those watching at home, and I know for those of you that it's your first meeting here tonight, I know what that feeling is like, a little bit of nerves and a lot of happiness, and I see the smiles that you try to fight back as you sit up there for the first time, so it's an exciting feeling. I'm excited for both of you, and George and Richard, thank you for continuing to do what you do. Just wanted to extend an olive branch, I know George and Richard were involved in it in the past, that in the past, city council and school board had a joint meeting, I want to say about a year and a half ago, roughly, a year and a half ago, so just wanted to extend the olive branch, once you guys get settled in a little bit, that hopefully we can work on that, making that a reality again, so that we can work together to make Strongsville the best that it can possibly be. I'm sure this guy talks more than any of us, so we'll turn it over to him.
Jim Carbone. I first wanted, before I congratulate everybody, I want to thank somebody in the audience, and that's Mr. Whitaker. Just absolute pleasure, he's my son's teacher, he's been a blessing to our family, my son, and it's really appreciated. Also, the job, the election is over, and I congratulate everybody up there. Richard, congratulations. And George, thank you for continuing. It's very important, and that's why the joint meeting that Mr. Schoenhut talked about, you know, we can, we have great pride in our community, but I've always said, and that goes back to many years ago, George, when we were putting together the bond issue, our city is nothing without great phenomenal schools. So, us as a council, we are committed to working with you, doing whatever we have to do to keep those relationships, and to make sure our schools are strong, so our city is strong. Thank you.
So, I just want to thank the three of you for coming and representing council, and I know as a board, we're gonna look forward to having that joint meeting. We're a man short, so give us some time to get our reserves back up, and we'll set that up for sooner than later.
You'll be fine, I've been short my whole life.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, next on our agenda is appointments of liaisons to committees for one-year terms. Obviously, we need to start by removing or striking Duke Evans' name from any of the committees. Just going through them quickly, we have city council with Michelle Bissel. Would anyone like to volunteer to be the second person? And none of these have to be cast in stone or decided now, but... So, I see Mr. Grozan volunteering, so we'll put George on city council. We have Strongsville Education Foundation with Laura, and unless anyone wants to fight me for it, I'll join Laura with that. So, Laura and myself. Strongsville PTA Council, we have George, and we're gonna, we're gonna make Laura a full liaison. I think that's a good idea to have them for all of those liaisons. So, the two, the two possible members for Strongsville PTA will be George and Laura. And then, Ohio School Boards Association legislation, traditionally is myself, unless somebody really is just dying to take it over. Hearing none, I will continue in that. So, with those four, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grozan, second by Mrs. Hausum. George, would you take the role?
Sure. Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have appointment of liaison to committee for three-year term. This is for the Polaris Career Center. As most of you know, I love doing that, so I would like to continue to do that, unless there's any arguments, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Grozan. George?
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is board committee appointments for one-year term. Finance committee. Michelle, would you like to take that?
Sure.
So, we have, for finance, we have Michelle and Laura. Policy committee. I thought I was gonna escape, but at least temporarily, if you don't mind, Laura, I'll join you back on that, so to speak. So, policy will be myself and Laura. And then, facilities, I know George is raring to continue the great job he does on that, and we're gonna have Michelle on that also, and we're gonna strike alternate, both of you are full, full members of that committee. And then, the business advisory committee is George and myself. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion by George, second by Michelle. George?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, those are our assignments, and I will just explain that once we fill the vacant position, we'll probably come back to these and adjust them as necessary. It's just a way to divide labor and make sure everybody can provide a little more guidance for the Board. We now move to the routine part of our organizational meeting. These are items on our consent calendar. We have number 12, establishment of 2020 Board of Education meeting dates. Those are in Exhibit A. Robert's Rules of Order will be used in the absence of Board policy. Number 14 is the establishment of a service fund for fiscal year 2021, in the amount of $20,000 or $2 for each child enrolled, whichever is greater. Number 15, recommendations by superintendent, authorizing the treasurer to reinvest available funds for 2020 in accordance with Board policy, and to pay bills within the adopted appropriations in 2020. Number 16 is legal counsel appointments. This one is a separate motion, be it resolved that the superintendent of schools and his designees be authorized to contact legal counsel as necessary for the successful performance of their duties. Legal counsel is designated to be Squire Pettin Boggs, Pepel and Wagner, Riley Law Firm, Walter and Haverfeld, Brinza McIntyre and Seed, Peters, Kellel and Markecus, and Retsel and Andrus. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grozan, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? I will just say for the public, we list a lot of lawyer, law firms, we list them so that we have the ability to get the best representation, the best advice we need. Each of these law firms have different areas of concentration, so we pick and choose based on what our needs are, but as always, we're aware and cognizant of the cost. Mr. Anagnostu?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan, or, Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Continuing on with our consent calendar, number 17, Board of Education meeting minutes. Provided that the Board of Education members receive the minutes of previous meetings at least five or more days in advance of a meeting, authorization is given to the Board to waive reading of the minutes at that meeting. Eighteen, resolution requesting notification, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the resolution requesting that the Board of Education be notified by the tax commissioner of any application for exemption from taxation for any property located within the district. Tax budget, number 19, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the tax budget for fiscal year 2021 be adopted. Twenty investments, be it resolved...
I have a presentation with the tax budget.
Oh, I apologize, you're right. We will pause and dazzle us with your presentation.
So, the tax budget's an annual item. I'm gonna move to the podium. So, as mentioned, the tax budget is, it's an annual item that the Board must adopt and submit to the county by January 15th of every year. The tax budget starts the process of the budgeting process for next fiscal year. Since we're on fiscal year, our fiscal year overlaps two calendar years, so our fiscal year is July 1 through June 30th, but the county collects tax, levies taxes on a calendar year basis, so that's why it's, for this upcoming calendar year, starting with fiscal year July 1st. What the tax, the purpose of the tax budget, the county budget commission must certify tax rates to each subdivision or other taxing units by March 1st for school districts. The county budget commission is required to issue an official certificate of resources for the upcoming fiscal year, which is 2021. When the budget commission is setting tax rates based on a taxing unit's need, we must show a need to the county as to why they need to collect the taxes, which is, which shows a proposed budget, which is in Schedule 2. The tax budget consists of five schedules. One is a schedule of the taxes levied. The second schedule is statement of fund activity for the upcoming fiscal year. Three is unvoted general obligation debt. Four is voted debt, and five is tax anticipation notes. So, Schedule 1, the division of taxes levied, these are all of our taxes, or all of our levies that we have levied listed by fund, so we have the general fund, the PI fund, and the bond improvement fund. As you will see, we have the levy that was authorized by the voters in May of 2019 on there, as well as a five-year renewal levy. Overall, what I do have broken down is, we have our maximum tax rate that was authorized, and based on House Bill 920, depending on how the assessed valuations move, the tax rates adjust, so we're still collecting the same level of taxes that were levied. As you will see, for the general fund, it's estimating that we'll collect 69 million. This shows it at 100% of tax collected, because that's what we want the tax commissioner to collect, is 100%. Our collection rate is around 97% between property and commercial property. Included in that 69 million is the portion that's parceled out for home set and rollback as well. And then, going with a maximum tax rate, for the general fund, it's 83.68, which is devoted. For residential, the effective rate is 40.18, and commercial is 45.32. So, any questions on the schedule? Schedule 2 is a statement of activity. It's, it's, you can find it in the exhibit, it was too many to list here, but it's the upcoming budget for fiscal year 2021, based on my projections. The general fund's based on the five-year forecast, or the updated five-year forecast, and all the remaining funds are coming from my annual budget document that I had broken out for a five-year period as well. Schedule 3 is our unvoted debt. We have three unvoted debt, two of them are in the general fund. The two in the general fund were first issued in 2005 for the facility improvement at the preschool and acquiring school buses. That final maturity is 2035. We still have outstanding as of January 1st of 845,000, and our calendar year principal and interest payments is 79,875. We also have a House Bill 264 Energy Conservation Note from 2008 with the final maturity in 2023. Principal outstanding there is 1.2 million, and our annual principal and interest is 347,000. And then, in the permanent improvement fund, we have a land lease from Eraski, which went into effect in 2005, the final maturity is 2034, and our outstanding principal there is 3,170,000, and our annual principal and interest payments is $278,000. Schedule 4, our voted debt, we only have one, which was the 80 million, 81 million dollar bond issue. That was for the construction of the middle school, renovation of the high school, and other improvements throughout the district as well. Our current principal outstanding is 16, of the 81 million dollars, our principal outstanding is 69,235,000, and our annual principal and interest payments are 4,4219,000. And all of this, if you go back to Schedule 1, for the bond retirement fund, that three mils, that's, those dollars pay for that bond issue. And Schedule 5, tax anticipation notes, we have none. So, with that, that concludes the tax budget, if there's any questions.
Thank you, George.
Thanks.
Continuing our agenda, investments, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that the Board authorizes the treasurer to invest up to a maximum of 40% of the district's interim funds in commercial paper notes in accordance with Board Policy 6144. District credit card limits, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that per Board Policy 6423, the annual credit card limits per cardholder and/or account be approved as listed in the exhibit. I will note that we have that policy and those limits, and we set them annually to balance keeping the credit cards secure and reasonable, but also allowing the various employees of the district to get the work done, and a lot of times in this day and age, if you don't have a credit card, you can't get that work done. OSBA annual membership dues and subscriptions, as listed. We also join the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund. The cost for this service is $250, and that's in Exhibit D. House Bill 9, Ohio Public Records Training Certification, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that to be in compliance with all Ohio Public Records statutes and the Board of Education requirement, that the treasurer, George K. Anagnostu, be the designee on behalf of the Board of Education for public records training. You're willing to serve in that capacity?
Sure. And, Richard, just to give an explanation to the new board members, what that is, is annually, once during, not annually, once during your term, you need to complete a public records training, but this designation gives the authority that you're delegating me to do that on your behalf. So, I usually do it once every two years, that way it captures everybody.
Thank you.
And I will share, it's important that we do that, and that George stays aware of what the latest rules are, along with the Board, along with everyone. It's our way of committing to the public that we do things transparently and we do them correctly.
And also, although you're delegating me too, if you do want to go to any of the trainings, you're welcome to go as well.
Twenty-five, broadcast of board meetings. In accordance with Board Policy 0169.3, the Board authorize, authorizes the public broadcast of regular board meetings during the calendar year, and thanks to Mr. Binkley, we'll be streaming them, along with all the other ways we put them out there, on YouTube and on the cable channels. Twenty-six, resolution for group health, vision, and dental insurance for board members, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that board members may participate at their own expense in group health, vision, and dental insurance plans provided to the employees of the district. And I will highlight that that's at the, if any board member would choose to do that, it's at their expense. Number 27, a separate resolution, be it resolved that the Strongsville Board of Education... that the Strongsville Board of Education authorizes the Superintendent to employ personnel on a temporary basis between board meetings. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Groszan, second by Mrs. Bissel. Any discussion? George?
Mr. Groszan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I'm happy that at number 28, I get to turn it over to the Superintendent.
Great job, Mr. Miko. And congratulations once again to you and Laura on your leadership positions, and I look forward to working with you in your new roles. Couple of things before we get to the agenda. I do want to, as Kelly shared, our new nameplates were homemade in our maker space. You know, what I love is some of our staff come up and say, hey, one of the, I think a student made this. A student made it with a Cavs logo, with the LED lights, and they said, wouldn't this be cool if we could do this with the board members and the nameplate? So thanks to a lot of folks in our tech department, Dwayne and Dave and Bob and Jim, as well as some of our teachers, Ted Hardaby and Dan Hogan, who all had a piece of putting this together. Even the little battery box is homemade in the maker space, so we're, it's a cool thing. And for the right price, we can make you whatever you need for city council. The other thing I, the other thing I wanna share before we move on is just my thanks and appreciation for Colonel Evans for the six years of leadership he provided for our district and to the board and to me personally. Duke was a great colleague. He was a great friend. He was a great leader. And, and our district is better off because of his service and the work that he did. And if you know Duke publicly or privately, his heart was always in the right place, always working for the students, always tirelessly going in and talking to our kitchen staff and talking to our bus drivers and talking to our teachers to make sure that we were doing what we needed to do for our kids. So on behalf of the entire district, I'd like to, to thank Colonel Evans, and like we did for Jane and Carl, we will make him a plaque commemorating his years of service and our gratitude to his leadership on behalf of our students and our community. With that, moving on to timely information, the only item we have is school calendars. Those were presented back a few months ago. Laura presented those for the 2021 and 2021, '22 school years. I presented to the board all of the feedback I received at the December meeting. I forwarded you the email that I received from an additional community member. But be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that those calendars be adopted as found in Exhibit E. Any questions or feedback on timely information?
I was simply gonna comment, you know, the, the email that we received recently. I think it, it highlighted some dimensions that I wasn't particularly paying attention to as far as families where both the, the husband and the wife or the father and the mother are working and the challenges that presents. So I don't, we're not in a position to adjust the existing calendar, but I did wanna publicly say that, you know, the next, the next time we do this, we'll make sure to have that kind of input and, and either, you know, find some representatives of the community or just put that lens on to look at the calendar and, and make sure we understand the, the burdens we may or may not be creating.
And specifically to give context, the feedback was, starting on a Tuesday leaves one additional day for providing daycare or child services versus what we've done in the last couple of years was starting on a Monday, which gives parents a, a full week for camps or other-
Right.
-activities.
So I thought that was good-
Yeah, it was good feedback.
Good feedback.
Under Curriculum, we do have one overnight trip for the high school wrestling team. Be resolved upon my recommendation that permission be granted to the Strongsville High School Wrestling Team to travel to Perrysburg, Ohio to participate in the Perrysburg Invitational Tournament on January 10th and 11th, 2020. Expenses associated with the trip will be paid by the Mustang Wrestling Club. And with that, that concludes the Superintendent's report.
Any other questions for Cameron? Moving on in the agenda, we come to the Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of Consent Calendar at this point means that all items in this agenda with an asterix are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or the Superintendent requests any item to be removed. Do I have any requests?
So moved.
Do I have any requests to remove items?
No.
Hearing none, can I have a motion from Mr. Groszan?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by George, second by Laura. George?
Mr. Groszan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Part 30, Board Policies. We have a number of policies on first reading. The majority, if not all of them, just make sure that we're compliant with state or federal law, and they're, they're all rather routine. But this is the first reading, and our habit or our pa, practice is to have three readings before we vote on them. And then Section 31, Board of Education Other. Obviously, we're gonna discuss filling the vacancy. Is there any other things to discuss before that on anyone's radar? You wanna lead, Cameron?
Sure. To discuss the process that we've gotta go through? So whenever we have a, a board member resign midterm, there is bylaws, board policy that dictate the rules that we must follow to fill that vacancy. So the first part is that you cannot fill the vacancy within 10 days of the resignation. So from, since the resignation was accepted tonight, through January 19th, the board could not take any action to fill that vacancy. The second aspect of it is, is that you have to fill the vacancy within 30 days. So by February 9th, or so you have to fill the vacancy, and if the board fails to fill that vacancy, then probate court will make the decision on behalf of the board as to who the member will be. The other part of the rule is, once you get past that 10-day part where you cannot recommend or appoint a board member, you must, by policy, you must do it at your next regularly scheduled or special meeting. So our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on January 22nd. What that means, if that board meeting stays scheduled as January 22nd, at that meeting, the board must appoint, recommend, and appoint, and vote on somebody to fill Duke's vacancy. So that is the general overview of the procedures. George, anything that I missed that you'd like to add?
No, I think you covered it. We'll be po, we'll be posting an application here on the website. We're gonna discuss the process, and once we come to a process, we'll have the application out there when the deadlines are due.
Yeah, and so tomorrow, we will have a press release that will go out. It will share acknowledgement of Duke's service, as well as give the outline of that process, access to the applications. And applications, once those are finalized and put online, or that will be available in the Treasurer's office, can either be emailed back to George, or they can be dropped off to this building in our Treasurer's office. And, and once we have further conversations, we'll decide what that deadline is and communicate that publicly tomorrow. So for those that may be interested in applying to be a, a board member, all of that information will be sent out. It'll be on our website. It will be put out on our social media channels. Dan will send it out to all of our media partners and media outlets to have that, and I think that covers it.
And the other, the other piece of it, it's, so whoever's selected would fill Duke's remaining term. So it'd be a two-year term through Jan, through Dec, December 31st of 2021. And if that person would like to continue, they would need to run in that November, that November election of 2021.
Mr. Miko, can we have a special board meeting with the applicants? I'm hoping that we can get the applicants and their, their forms to us. But can we have it on the 19th?
Yeah, I think that's something that we will discuss and make sure our calendars are in alignment.
Okay.
So the big milestones or the big dates to, the thresholds to be aware of is, is the first one. We cannot, the board cannot appoint someone sooner than 10 days. And then the second threshold or milestone to be aware of is, is if the, the board doesn't appoint someone within 30 days, that responsibility goes to the probate court of the county. So I'm, I'm confident that as a board, we want to have that responsibility. I don't think anyone wants a judge outside of Strongsville that doesn't necessarily know what's best for Strongsville choosing a board member. So this board will invest in that process, and we will choose a board member. The other factual thing is what George discussed. Because Duke's resignation came more than halfway through his, his four-year term, whoever's appointed would fulfill the, the rest of the term. And then if they wanted to stay on the board, they would have to go through the, the election process to be reelected. But the, whoever's appointed will fulfill this year and next year as, as their appointed term. The, in my mind, the things that we wanna do is set up a process that will allow us to get the best group of applicants that are interested and passionate about doing good work for our school district, and to have that so that whoever is interested can come forward. So we need to have some appropriate period of time to accept those applications, but it can't be so late that the board and the administrative team doesn't have time to review the applications and come up with a process to do interviews, et cetera. Speaking practically, you know, if we get 30 applications, we're not in a position to interview 30 people. If we get a, a small number, we would interview all of those people, but a lot of that depends on how many people apply. So but it is important that we solicit the, the people. The other thing that's, to be clear, to be appointed, you have to have the same qualifications to be elected. So you need to be a resident of the city of Strongsville. You need to be 18 years old. You need to-
Registered voter.
A registered voter within the city. Just in case anybody's interested, make sure you have those qualifications. But I think we'll, later to, during our, our executive session, we, we can discuss that. We'll come up with that procedure. We'll publicize that procedure, trying to allow as much time to get as many good applications as possible, but also knowing we need a deadline so that we can do the next part of the process. With that said, I do wanna discuss with the board members, I think it's wise for us to cancel the next meeting here today to give us the most flexibility, unless I hear any disagreement. But that, that becomes an issue that if we keep that meeting on the calendar, as Cameron pointed out, we have to appoint someone at that meeting. And that's, that's awful soon for this process to work. So unless I hear anything, I think, I want, I wanna hear feedback if anyone doesn't agree with canceling the meeting.
If we cancel it tonight, and we find that we're in a position that we can make an appointment on the 22nd, can we reinstate the meeting?
We would call a special meeting.
We would have to do a, yeah. We would have to do a posting and go through the process.
Is there anything on that meeting that will cause a problem?
That's what I was gonna ask. Is there any pressing business that we have to address?
Our next meeting would, after that, is February 4th?
February 6th.
Or 6th, I'm sorry. So it's two weeks. So that, that meeting would have probably a lot more.
Right, I mean, that would become the regular business meeting where we would accomplish all the, the work. I just wanna make sure there isn't any deadlines.
Rich, that's also Founder's Day, which we usually kind of-
It's actually February 6th.
Yeah.
We'll be efficient. So a hearing consensus, let's do that.
We could always, if you want, we could always keep it and then cancel it as we get closer based on the-
Based on the thing. Yeah, we can discuss that and determine that. If we are gonna cancel it, I wanna message that as soon as possible. So we'll determine our timelines and then message the public. Again, the goal is to allow interested parties to, to apply so that we have the best group of candidates to choose from. Any other comments, concerns about that? I also wanna compliment Duke for his years of service. It's greatly appreciated. We've, you know, six years is a long time to be on the, on the board, and, and there's been a lot of, a lot of change in that six years and a lot of good change, and the stuff that Duke's responsible for, we, we thank him for it. It was a great, great accomplishments, and we look forward to the, the plaque and the poster, so that'll be good. Any other Board of Education other? Hearing none. We have meeting notification. To be decided, but at this point in time, the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled to be held Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020, in the Admin Building here. We do have need for executive session on the topic of-
To consider the appointment of a public official and to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by George, second by Laura.
Mr. Groszan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes. We will enter executive session at 8:50. We do not anticipate- 7:50, wrong hour. Seven, yeah, we will definitely not wait till 8:50. We will enter executive session at 7:50. I thank everyone for their attention. We're very excited to be on the board, and we're looking forward to doing good work on behalf of our students and our taxpayers. Thank you, and have a nice evening.